Call to order and roll call.
Chair Goss.
Present.
Vice Chair Swab.
Here.
Commissioner McCoy.
Here.
Commissioner Sixta.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Commissioner Sarkisian is excused. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Meeting of Kingman, Arizona, Wednesday, June 11th. Today, we have kind of an abbreviated agenda. We're going to learn some things, and we're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. First off, we just have the approval of minutes. These are the regular meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission for May 14th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
I move to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission for May 14th, 2025.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote?
Yes, Chair Goss.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Chair Swab.
Approve.
Commissioner McCoy.
Approve.
Commissioner Sixta.
Approve.
Commissioner Waters.
Approve.
It's been approved, sorry.
Thank you. No problem. I just thought you were exceedingly polite. All right, next we have the call to public. This is those wishing to address the commission should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The commission may not respond to speakers during the call to public. The commission may direct staff to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any comments? No? All right, I see none. Next, we have action items, and these are reports today, exclusively, actually. The first is a traffic master plan and site visibility triangle report. Staff will provide an update on the city's master transportation plan, the intersection of the Walupi Mountain Road and Andy Devine, and site visibility as requested by the commission. This is a staff presentation for information only.
Chair Goss, Commissioners, this presentation will actually be a tag team presentation. We wrapped it all into one, so we'll start off with engineering, addressing the site visibility, and then, I'm sorry, with the master plan, and then a discussion regarding one of the intersections that was requested to be looked at, and then we'll finish it off with the site visibility triangle.
Great. Thank you, Jason.
Good evening, Chair Goss and Commissioners. My name is Mike Garman. I'm the city engineer. This should be a pretty brief presentation. Mostly going to talk about this map that you see on the screen. This is a map that's from our transportation master plan that was adopted by council in December of 2023. The transportation master plan is the guide for decision making regarding transportation decisions. The time horizon for the master plan is 2045, so that was the, how far they looked out. This particular exhibit is a functional classification map. It basically shows the different street classifications for the various streets and roads in Kingman. Again, this is assuming a 2045 built-out condition, and so we're talking 20 years down the road. What are these street classifications going to be for the, for these different streets? It's composed of local streets, which are your residential neighborhoods that have one travel lane each way. Collector streets, they collect, they connect residential streets to arterial streets. They have one travel lane each way with a center turn lane. If you'll think of Harrison between Beverly and Airway, that's a good example of what we currently have as a collector. And then there's the arterial streets. Those are the, the green, the green is the minor arterial, and the red is the major arterial. These provide free flow of traffic from one point to another. Minor arterial street is two travel lanes each way with a center turn lane. Major arterial street, the standard section the city has is three travel lanes each way with a raised median. If you'll think of Airway between Andy Devine and Stockton Hill, that's a minor arterial street. The transportation master plan has a list of projects with different priorities. Obviously, the traffic interchanges at Flying Fortress and eventually Kingman Crossing are the biggest priority roads for the city. In addition to that, Flying Fortress Parkway, which is the extension from the, from the traffic interchange to Airway, and then from Airway, from, Airway from the Parkway to Prospector is another high priority project. And then there's Kingman Crossing from Airfield to Southern. Those projects are all in our current CIP. In the future, priority projects are improvements to Southern and Walupi Mountain Road. I kept the presentation brief because I'm thinking that you guys probably have questions, you want to ask specific questions, so if you have any questions, I'll take those at this time.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
I do. So you said the future values are, thank you, by the way, this is really helpful and informational. The future values are focused on Southern and Walupi Mountain Road. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Madam Chair and Councilwoman Swab, the, the, there are a list of priority projects, and when I said the future ones, the future ones are the ones that are priority projects that aren't currently in the CIP. So Southern and Walupi Mountain Road, those improvements are further out in the time horizon, so they're not currently in the CIP.
Okay. And then the, in the CIP currently, are the two new interchanges going in?
The CIP has the, well, the previous CIP had the traffic interchange, but now they're looking out for FY '26 and in the future, it would be the connector roads from the traffic interchange, which is the Parkway and Airway. Kingman Crossing, I'm going to be real careful here, this is a little still, a little bit up in the air, nobody really knows exactly what the situation is with that. Once that goes in, though, there's a connector road, I can point to it right here, that goes from Airfield down to Southern, which is, which is currently in the CIP. Does, sorry, does that answer your question?
I think so. So on the map right now, that, that furthest red dotted road and purple road up I-40, that is the Rattlesnake Wash interchange? Or is that, where you're pointing, is that Rattlesnake Wash?
Right, right. That's, that's what we're calling Flying Fortress Parkway, the traffic interchange.
Okay.
This portion that goes to the south, the city's portion would stop at Southern, and then the rest of this is all in unincorporated Mojave County. So for this portion to get built out, it would be something the county would have to initiate. So for the city's part, we would eventually improve from Louise to Southern.
Do I remember correctly, from last month, that initially the plan is to build out to Louise, and then after a certain number of houses, then the road would get built to Southern?
Yes. There's, there's currently, well, there's an older development agreement between the city and the developer for that property that talks about exactly when that phase of the Parkway is supposed to go in.
Mm-hmm, and I think he talked about that last month a little.
That's correct. I think the development agreement is like from 2008 or something like that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I do have one question. I know this is a long shot, but see Slaughterhouse Canyon Road, and it's listed as a blue collector, even where it goes way down by the rail. If you, sorry, if you go down, yeah, that little guy right there. I know people have consistently been complaining about Walupi Mountain Road and the traffic on there, and, you know, and I've heard one person at a public, one of these meetings we had, suggest using that as an alternate way to get downtown. On here, it looks like it's listed as a collector, but there's nothing at the end of it, you know? I mean, is that showing it connected? Is that what I'm seeing, or is...
Then you have to remember, this is 2020, 2045, so I, I did not prepare the master plan. Jack worked on it, and whenever he comes to talk about the intersection at Andy Devine and Walupi Mountain Road, he could probably elaborate on that a little bit, a little bit more.
Just, it'd be a big win if, if that could actually lead people downtown, just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a question, too?
One quick, is this city-funded, developer-funded reference from last month's meeting?
It's a, it's a mix. For example, this segment of Kingman Crossing between Airway and Santa Rosa will primarily be constructed by Engel Homes, or their subdivision. The developer that's working on a pre-plant right now over here, he will have to do the improvements for Louise out to his subdivision. So the goal is to try to get as much of it done through development projects as we can. Obviously, that's not going to do all of it, but that's, that's the goal.
And these will be in place at what point in time in the development? Because they come in phases. Is it phase one, two, three?
Well, this one, Kingman Crossing, we have, we've been working on a development agreement with Engel Homes to specify exactly when they're supposed to put that in. And we're, we're, we're working it out in a way where they can only go so far with their development before they have to put that in. The one that's over here for Louise, I think his pre-plant is just a little 40-acre snippet right here, but we've told him that he has to do the improvements, because he owns the property on both sides. He has to do the improvements all the way to his, to the first phase to get it to work. I mean, he wouldn't have any access otherwise, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions? No? All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Commission. My name is Jack Plonty. I am the Assistant Public Works Director. I work over the transportation side. We're generally on the maintenance side, but we, we work with Mike and Jason, especially on the development side as well. And so I'll apologize upfront. I'm going to show you some slides that you had not seen. I didn't have any in your packet. I told Jason I'd only have one, and then changed my mind to make sure I give you guys enough detailed information. So if you have any questions, obviously ask them. Again, sorry to throw those at you last minute. So I'm going to touch on a couple pieces, and really, my goal was to narrow us down to Walupi Mountain Road and Andy Devine specifically. You had a great question that was a segue into that, and so we'll, we'll kind of work our way down through that. Before I leave Mike's slide here, one thing I do want to point out, this slide is a diagrams, a diagram, if you will, a future build-out of arterial and collector roads. You guys are all touring around town. You're talking about east-west travel across the city, especially between Stockton Hill and Andy Devine. That's pretty limited. It's, nothing works really well, or is built out, let me, let me back up, is built out to function as a collector and arterial, so a lot of times you end up with residential roads that function in that form, but they're, you know, two-lane, on-street parking, those sorts of things. So the goal of this transportation master plan was to try and help look forward to, to prevent those types of things. So when you look at this, keep in mind, this is future build-out, and some of these, some of these roadway alignments don't exist currently. They're, they will change as development occurs, and that's mainly because, you know, land ownership, size of the development, things like that. But this is the guiding piece to make sure that we have a good network east-west, north-west, northwest, north-south, you know, into the future. And so this is a tool for that. And so with that, I'll switch over to my slides, if I can do so without yanking the computer off the... All right. So Walupi Mountain Road and Andy Devine Ave. So first one I want to touch on, traffic congestion. The TMP, the Transportation Master Plan, when we completed that, that was in 2023, but most of the information as far as traffic counts, congestion, traffic modeling, was based in 2022, because that was the most up-to-date information we had at the time. So I do want to point out, and I'll talk about it again a little bit later, when we did the transportation master plan, and we prioritized projects, which we'll talk about, it was based off of a number of things. One of those is predictive growth. So the map, again, as you look at it, and some of the future projects, you see those priorities may change, and, and they may change for a number of reasons. One, traffic volumes may be different than we predicted. We looked at growth areas, and we tried to predict where growth would occur, and then we base our traffic modeling off of that, and what the needs looking into the future would be. So the other side of that is, is you have development that occurs that is, you know, maybe not traffic-driven. There will be some relief from, use the Flying Fortress way as an example. It will provide some relief to surface streets, but generally, that project was also heavily driven on economic development and growth of the city. So there's two factors to that. My side, what I'm normally looking at is traffic volumes, congestion, those sorts of things. So the, the slide you're looking at right now was traffic congestion. It doesn't show it in here. We always talk in level of service, A, B, C, D, you know, just like your report card, the lower you get in the alphabet, the worse it looks. So I just want to point out that intersection at Walupi and Andy Devine that is shown is a moderate congestion in 2022. There have been some changes to that, and I don't have a, a current model depiction that shows it. There's a number of things that are driving that. Some of them are short-term, some, short-term, and some of them are long-term. So the long-term drivers is really downtown. You have all the development that's occurring up there, you have the existing homes, and, you know, the schools, the city and county buildings that are down here, all the businesses. There's, there's only one good access point into downtown right now, which is Andy Devine. So you have the bulkier traffic that is coming off the east side of Andy Devine. Walupi is that point for getting into downtown. The short term of it, we've been seeing changes in the traffic patterns at that intersection specifically related to Eastern. So we've got two projects. One, Mike's team wrapped up, which was at Airway, which was the bypass or the connection to Airway for Eastern. And then the one that's going on right now is a waterline project. And so anytime we impact the traffic on Eastern, we see changes in the patterns, and, you know, a lot of people will try and avoid the construction zone and go one direction or the other. So a lot of times that increases the traffic at one intersection or the other. One thing I do want to talk about here, and we'll kind of dive into it a little bit more, we've done a couple of engineering analysis, and so we've hired a traffic, a traffic engineer to come out. We've done traffic counts, so we look at volumes, turning movements, and then we try and adjust the signal, and we do a timing plan. And so we run what we call a time-of-day plan, and we look at the traffic volumes and say, okay, from seven to nine, or six to nine, whatever those windows are, we see a high volume of traffic moving one way, so we favor that phase. So in the morning, good example, Andy Devine, you may not realize it, because the congestion gets so heavy with the amount of traffic coming downtown, we actually favor and we put more time to that intersection. What that does is it sacrifices the level of service at the other phases, but because we have so much volume of traffic on that side, we really have no choice. And so we've, we've made multiple changes to that intersection through traffic analysis and timing adjustments. The problem is that intersection is saturated. It has so much traffic. Without physical improvements to that intersection, we can't move any more traffic, or we can't move more traffic efficiently. So we looked at some changes to that timing. So when you come up and you're on Andy Devine, and you get a, a phase that is a turn and a through movement, we call that a split phase. So we looked at going to split phase all the way around the intersection, but it lowers the level of service in it by increasing your cycle time. So when you pull up to a light and it turns red, the time it takes for it to come back to a green for you is that cycle time. And so we've, we've done everything we can on the, on the intersection timing itself. Like I say, now we're down to some physical improvements. So touching back on the transportation master plan a little bit, but I just really wanted to show where the, the project specifically, the one Commissioner Waters that you had mentioned, ranks in. So just talk about the TMP for just a minute. We had a technical advisory committee, which consisted of multiple departments in the city. It was planning at the time, engineering, public works, and then also included, actually PD was in that, that mix, but also included Mojave County, ADOT, WACOG, and, and, you know, there's one more that is slipping, oh, the public. That was the major component to that, and I don't know why that would fall off my radar. The public was a major contributor to this. We ran a really, I thought was unique. It was the first thing, first project that I'd had where we had received as much public input as we had. And so that was for potential projects, and when we did prioritization, we ran a website, we ran multiple rounds of public outreach, and we were really successful in that. We had a lot of good feedback from the public. And so that generated 103 potential projects for traffic congestion, safety improvements, and so we, we can't do all of those projects. And so we listed all those projects, and then we went and we sat down to prioritize them. I included this slide. Keep in mind, these numbers are from 2022, and I can tell you they've changed drastically. We would love to do all the projects that were on that list, but as you're looking at, you know, the cost per lane mile, so that's one lane of roadway, is, you know, pretty significant. And so that list of projects we generated was almost $700 million worth of projects. Again, looking into 2045, and some of those were shared projects. If you look back at that last exhibit I showed you, there were projects that are in the county that are ADOT-related, but we looked essentially inside of our water service boundary, so that goes outside of the city limits. Not that we're going to fund those projects, but our transportation systems in our little region function together. So a good example I can think of is, you guys have been here long enough, you can remember when they widened and added the bridge on 93, but part of that was still not up to par through, through other sections of the roadway. And so you had congestion and things, even though you had half the road or the remaining segment that was in good shape. So same way, we wanted to look at the transportation system as a whole, including the county, to make sure that, you know, we line up our, our transportation priorities. So we talked about prioritization, and especially the public. We used a ranking system in there, and if you look, especially on the roadway, since that's specifically what we're talking about, we weighted each project ranking. And so the, the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, went through as a group and graded all the different projects, and then those grades were weighted. And that was to, to try and give the best benefit on a project, right? I can have two projects, I can spend the same amount of money, one benefits, you know, say 2% of the, the population or the traffic volume, and I can have another one that we spend the same amount of money on, but will benefit, say, 40% of roadway users. So that's what this was, was to do, or to help with. And so if, as you look in there, comfort, sounds kind of weird, but that's really a, call it complete street, when you drive down a street, or you walk down a street, that you're comfortable doing so. You feel safe based on the geometry of the roadway, the speeds, those sorts of things. So the rest of that was really based on, there was some cost initiative or, or weight in there, and then also, you know, a big chunk of that is safety. Oops, sorry. So now let's get down specifically, and sorry for taking the long way to get there, but to the intersection of Walupi Mountain and Andy Devine. As I mentioned, it is saturated, so we're going to have to look at physical improvements. When we go to the transportation master plan, if you look down there on the bottom, you'll see project number 45, that is Slaughterhouse Canyon Road. That was a solution that was identified. $2022, that was, that was estimated at around $10 million. I can tell you, just based on the, the geometry in there, and then looking at what would probably or likely need to occur to, to cross the railroad tracks, because being SF crosses down there, that number would inflate and be higher. As it is, though, out of the 67 projects that were ranked, this project ranked 45. Not that it's not important, but when you look at the traffic volumes, and, and again, if we were to go back and look at this right now, based on the growth and things that have happened over the city, which I kind of skipped over that slide, and, oh no, I didn't, talking about the growth in that, that part. I apologize. I'm going to pack up. So I, I skipped over this slide pretty quickly. So this slide is showing the traffic volume increase from 2020 to 2024. And as you can see, you've seen moderate growth, up to around 5,000 trips per day in that volume for that intersection. And so as you see changes like, like that, where you, you have maybe faster growth or larger growth than was anticipated, some of those priorities would change. So where that ranked at 45, when we completed that in 2023, that could change. It's at 45? Is it going to go to number one? Not likely. But it, it would probably rank higher at this point in time. So right now, this coming fiscal year, starting July 1, we're looking at a interim solution. It's not going to solve the left-hand turn problem directly, but there's two options we are looking at. We actually have some right-of-way that goes behind what is a dam bar and the old smokehouse and those, those apartments that are there. And, you know, maybe potentially that's a slip lane to get traffic moving what would be eastbound on Andy Devine. And then the other option is, there's a decent amount of right-of-way. Maybe we can add a right turn lane at the intersection. Both of those have pros and cons, but coming into the, the new fiscal year, we have some funds set aside to where we can do an engineering analysis and probably a low-level design concept report, and start budgeting and trying to program an improvement to the intersection, a physical improvement. Again, that won't, that won't solve all our problems, but that'll definitely improve the situation that's there. And with that, I talked a lot, and I will try and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
I do. Well, sorry, the history of that Slaughterhouse Canyon, correct me if I'm wrong, that used to be Old Trails Highway, I believe, the alignment going east out of town, or back before '66 was even conceived of, if I remember right. And then it turned, and then it'd go down at Fourth out of town. But the reason why I'm bringing that up is, is maybe, if that's true, like, the city could kind of pitch it to the public that, yeah, let's resurrect this, this old national, you know, the National Trails Highway, and maybe show some pictures of cowboys on, on Model Ts driving down this old highway through the desert, you know? It has a strong history in, in the West. Maybe get some interest, or the city could at large, you know, to get people for that project. I'm not sure if there's any historic grants or something, you're resurrecting an old highway. Heck, I'd like to see the other end of Old Trails where that windmill farm crosses over where that old abandoned trailer court was there. Get that connected. That'd be an awesome way to come into town and just stop at Fourth Street and see the courthouse as the first thing when you come into town, you know? It's, it was beautiful. The second thing I did want to bring up is, has there been any, you said you, you had feedback from the public. Was there any interest in roundabouts? I mean, I've been... I mean, I've been through Europe and I've seen them handle some pretty hot traffic. You know, without people can, just stopping, sitting there and getting angry at the city, they just keep moving, you know? It, it seems like a solution that maybe we've written off in the past and I'm not sure why.
Yeah, so uh Madam Chair, uh Commissioner Waters, uh good questions. So go to the first one, which was the Old Trails alignment. I'm unaware of that being an Old Trails alignment, not saying it was not a connector at some point in time. Uh to my knowledge, that wasn't the case, it's never been paved. Um so I don't know that there's any grants that would go back. You know, that uh would, would help us with that specifically. There may be some safety-related grants and things which are very competitive and so. Uh fortunately, we do have a grant writer and, and we're very active in, in uh, you know, trying to obtain other funds. Uh the other question you had about roundabouts, the transportation master plan didn't specifically look at roundabouts. When we get down to that level, we are looking at a uh design concept report or we're going into design at the project level. Um you know, when we're talking about moving vehicles in the master plan, it's, it's large, it's thirty thousand foot. Uh when we zoom in. So I can tell you, there have been a number of areas that they've looked at, at roundabouts and they do have their benefits at times. And then other times they don't fit the bill. They actually looked at them for Stockton Hill at I forty, uh that was a joint project with A dot or, or. Lead agency is A dot and uh they've tried to do them. The volume of traffic and things really prohibit and, and don't make those efficient or safe in that, in that particular environment. Um they have been looked at in other areas. Part of what we, we, I wouldn't say struggle with, but is a challenge. Is the right-of-way. So a roundabout takes up a lot of right-of-way. And people love them, people hate them. I'm not on either side of it at the moment, but uh they do take up a lot of right-of-way. And so in most of these instances, we are looking at trying to fit in existing right-of-way. And there's challenges like Stockton Hill, um we're looking to do a D C R, we put in grants and, and some other things. But um you know, the build-out of the facilities and the businesses and things really make that difficult when you have to obtain large pieces of right-of-way.
Well, thank you, I appreciate the impression.
Yeah, thank you.
Just one question, um with the traffic. Coming west on Walopai Mountain Road during a, during a school day at work time like seven forty-five. I, I think that you already explained this, but I'm not sure that I comprehended it. Um does it work to give um like, say, I don't know, three, four times more time? To that traffic at the stoplight than to the other three intersections stopped at the stoplight? Does that help decrease some of that traffic?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Swab. So we actually are already doing that and we change that in the day, in the time of day plan. So in the morning time, when that volume is moving west, we have a significant more amount of time for that westbound movement. Uh mostly turning on to Andy Devine, so we've actually way uh increased the time for the turn and the through movement significantly. In the afternoon, we have the opposite problem, about five o'clock. Then everybody's going uh eastbound on Andy and wanting to get, you know, either on Stockton Hill or onto Walopai. And so we actually change our time and we increase the volume of time. So to answer your question in short, yes, we are already doing that. And we have a significant more amount of time on uh the, the Walopai Mountain westbound phase in the mornings.
So it doesn't totally solve the problem, but it, it eases some of the traffic?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a question. You said something about crossing B N S F. Which road was that you were talking about?
Sorry, I got myself uh.
It's okay.
So you're talking about crossing it for Slaughterhouse Canyon specifically?
I'm not sure. I was trying to get clear on what you said because we closed Louise because of B N S F. So would that be an option maybe down railroad or coming down?
Right now.
It's closed, what?
It's closed.
I know it's closed.
Yeah. Slaughterhouse is closed.
Oh, Slaughterhouse is closed. Oh, still an option in the future.
Yeah, thank you for the question, um Madam Chair and Commissioner Sixta. So I actually wanna go back for just a minute.
Okay.
Uh Commissioner Waters had mentioned the crossing down at the end of Old Trails Road on the south end. We actually had approached B N S F to try and bring that uh railroad crossing back online specifically for emergency purposes. Uh you guys have been here during a snowstorm. Uh we've had Kingman completely isolated uh due to, to traffic accidents and everything on I forty ninety-three and on sixty-six.
Right.
And so that's always created challenges. And at that time, we put in a permit request with B N S F and it was denied. B N S S, B N S F does not want at-grade crossings. And so the crossing that I was talking about or I inti, I think that uh you picked up on. Would have been at Slaughterhouse Canyon where it crosses down by South Side Park.
Oh.
And so likely, and I can't speak, and, and definitely, because we'd have to go through B N S F. Uh they would likely not permit a at-grade crossing and so you'd end up with some type of over or underpass in that location.
Interesting. Thank you for your report.
One quick question, if I might. Have you ever thought about or has it been considered making? Walopai at Andy, two left turns in the morning?
Um Madam Chair and Commissioner McCoy, we've had some of that conversation. Uh part of the problem on that is just the, again, width. And when we do the evaluation for uh trying to improve that, that intersection, that'd likely be one of the items we look at. The only limitation you have there is that only gives you a protected turn. So when we're looking at a signal, you pull up to a signal and you get a green arrow. And then it goes to a green ball that's protected permissive. What that means is you make a protected turn on the green arrow, you're the only movement. And then when it goes to the green ball, it's permissive, so you are yielding to oncoming traffic. And trying to make a dual-left turn that is protected permissive is, is uh, doesn't really work out. And so you end up with a protected-only turn, which actually decreases the volume of traffic that you can move. Assuming you have safe gaps on the other direction to do so. Again, we're gonna look at a number of options.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you so much. Do we have any further questions? No? Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Get back to our previous presentation. My apologies. There we go. Well, good evening, uh Chair Goss, Commission. Uh my name's Heather Rasmussen. Thank you for having us this evening. Uh to, I'm here to speak tonight to the Site Visibility Triangle to give some perspective. And some examples as to how that is implemented around town. The intention of the Site Visibility Triangle is to protect uh, to provide safety. Pro- protecting pedestrians as they are traveling down the sidewalk, bicyclists. Uh anyone who may be making a turn in or out of a driveway or through an intersection and a lot of the intersections we just saw. That were discussed are quite busy. Uh so the Site uh Visibility Triangle, as you can see here in the diagram. Is intended to come from the corner of the right-of-way and measure back approx. To twenty-five feet. That is applicable to all streets, all alleys. And all driveways regardless of their designation throughout the city. So it could be an arterial or a collector. Uh private driveway or a, a public driveway, public entrance. So the intention is to uh look at that from the perspective of. What are the objects or, or obstructions that could be in that triangle as you. Sit in your vehicle or ride your bicycle down the street that prevent you from seeing around that corner, to see what's coming. Either maybe at you or away from you, or what maybe, who may be stepping off the curb. So that includes things such as landscaping, signage, fences, walls. Um maybe parking, on-street parking and even uh buildings that may come up to the edge of the corner of the property. We took a look at several jurisdictions. We looked at our own uh site visibility requirements along with Lake Havasu. Bullhead City and Mojave County. Across the board, everyone requires that we have a site visibility uh triangle. Generally about the same distance of twenty-five feet. Mojave County has a, a slightly shorter distance of twenty feet. Uh the only differentiation based on street designation that we found in this analysis. Was Mojave County being applied to residential. And then the height limit within the triangle. So certain things can be allowed within the site triangle, provided they're not too tall. Assuming you can see around them or over them. And we were largely on the same page. Uh us with Bullhead City being at three feet, Mojave County two and a half, and then Lake Havasu at, at two on the lower side. An example here, as you might see, it's Stockton Hill and Airway, just giving you a visual here of what would. How the triangle would align with what is there. So pulling back from that corner of the right-of-way, back twenty-five feet. And being able to see, as you can see in this aerial, there's uh mostly landscaping that's at the corner. But as I mentioned, landscaping can be an obstruction. So. You also have that in residential neighborhoods. Maybe somebody. Wants to build a wall to the very end of their property. Maybe somebody has parked a, an RV in that area. So those are all become these, these obstructions for being able to see through that, that turn. Looking at it from the street angle, you can see here what that may look like, starting at the corner. Going back those twenty-five feet and then our regulation of up to three feet tall, if you can see that here. Don't know that I have the arrow, but right there in the middle, trying to approximate what about three feet tall is, it's right about. Approximately where the walk button is on, on the pedestrian uh walk button on the street signal. So you can see landscaping there, nice and compliant, it's low, you're able to see around it or over it. But then we have a sign there, not obstruction, is over three feet. It's also a sign in the right-of-way which goes against a different code, but to the point of it being taller than three feet. Uh so that would be an obstruction, hard to see around, hard to see through. And some additional examples here, as I mentioned, it can be landscaping, can be utility boxes. It could be the fencing that is there. Again, additional, uh this appears to be more natural landscaping, not necessarily intentionally planted there. Uh but again, an obstruction uh in order to see who's coming down that road or should anybody be walking, bicycling? Utility box, perfect example. No idea who's on the other side of that. As I sit lower in my car, some vehicles even lower than others, that makes it even more difficult to be able to see. So as we work at uh site plan reviews, looking for those things, you know, what are they proposing for landscaping in their landscape plan? You know, you could have a tree there, but we do have rules about how high that tree needs to be trimmed up. Uh you could have utility boxes, but now we have an obstruction. So we need to be paying attention to that and we do. As we go through the site plan review process. Again, more. Maybe intentionally planted originally, but uh has definitely become overgrown. And even utility poles. Now, we don't have always the uh option to move those. But ensuring that, say, that fence can be uh the appropriate height, being able to see through it or around it. And then the vegetation there though is unfortunately, although the scent, the fence is see-through, the vegetation is not. So those are some additional examples there of the Site Visibility Triangle and, and some of those obstructions that come um. Come through incidental growth, you know, not, not necessarily intentionally putting a, a utility box there. Or a, a building or, or landscaping that's that large, but over twenty years, ten years, five years. If you water it enough, it gets quite large and, and then you aren't necessarily out there keeping it trimmed to the appropriate height. So a brief overview for you about. How that's laid out and some of the, the obstructions that can occur and what we're trying to keep clear there for safety. Be happy to answer any questions or comments.
Thank you. Um I, I do have a question. Um so great presentation, especially on all the things that are wrong. Um so what happens? Like you, you just identified tons of problems. What, what happens?
It's a great question. Thank you, Chair Goss. Um. Working with our Neighborhood Services Division, uh ideally would be how we go out and we make property owners aware. Uh maybe it's through the temporary sign ordinance and that sign-free zone. Uh could be through contact with the property owners, with the business owners. And we have one uh Neighborhood Service Division officer right now and he is. Running crazy. So uh he's working very hard at, at making sure that we have uh proper enforcement out there.
Okay, thank you. And then um if there is a problem with something. Um who, who do people refer things to? How does changes get made?
Uh those concerns can come to our office and, and we'd be able to handle them appropriately and at, at Jason's discretion. Being able to prioritize them specifically based on safety concerns.
Okay, thank you.
I would assume our, our first step. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jason.
Correct. Chair Goss, Commission. Uh one thing I do wanna point out though is, a lot of the times with the utilities themselves. So the utility vaults, the boxes that are out there, the poles, those are all in public utility easements. Uh so they actually would trump uh in that particular case. We try to work with them, we try to get them to be outside. Uh of our uh triangular line of site requirements. However, they, they have to actually be in line with where they're running their utilities. So in most of those cases, we don't have a lot of control over those.
Thank you. One other question. Um there are, um like you were mentioning, people building fences to the edge of their properties and things like that. Um there are a lot of places in Kingman where I feel like the stop signs are back, probably where they should be. But the, the housing has grown perhaps where it shouldn't be. And so you can't see. So you have to, you know, stop at the stop sign and then you have to go all the way to the edge of the street. In order to be able to see, to turn. Um which is a little tricky because then when you're pulling through the stop sign and people are trying to turn. They don't expect you to be coming for, you know what I mean? Anyway. Um is there a way to reevaluate where stop signs belong? Based on being able to see around changed, you know, landscaping in Kingman?
Chair, Chair Goss, Commission. I'll defer the stop sign to, to Jack. However, I do wanna bring one thing uh to light. Is our current ordinance, both in the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance, does not prohibit. Uh current developers from having their walls within the public utility easements. And so when you look at some of the developments that are out there. They have the ability to build those walls fairly close up to the property line and that actually obstructs the vision that you're talking about.
Exactly.
Uh and you end up with those conflicts. As part of the revision to our zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, we are taking that into consideration. I've had many discussions with uh some of the developers that uh, that have been doing that on an ongoing basis. I anticipate that will be an ongoing battle uh when we bring that ordinance forward, but it is for safety purposes. Not to mention the fact that there, the public utilities are now within the person's side yard or rear yard, which we're trying to prohibit.
Okay.
Stop from happening.
Thank you. Um yeah, so a question for you. Um if, if you can't see to turn where you stop at the stop sign. Is, is that a cause for moving stop signs so you can see? Or is that just uh good luck with that and make sure you inch forward enough to see before you turn?
Yeah, Madam Chair, the uh, the stop signs are actually set based on criteria from the manual and uniform traffic control devices. Um typically, and not in all occasions, so keep that in mind, specifically where you have sidewalk, especially with uh pedestrian ramps. We actually need to set those or required to set those back, assuming that there would be a crosswalk. You don't always have to stripe a crosswalk, there may not be one there. But they have us set those stop bars back to where your initial stop is, assuming that somebody could be crossing in that, that corridor right there. And then per state law, yes, you are allowed to creep up. We wouldn't wanna push those stop bars forward into those pedestrian crossing areas. Um again, we want that initial stop prior to the pedestrians, make sure that's clear, then you can creep up to make sure you can see uh oncoming traffic.
So I, I guess my only other thing is too, uh like say for example, um if you're going towards uh Gordon on Western. So you're heading like away from the, the um hospital. Um there's a stop sign there when you get to Gordon and there's a giant block wall that you can't see around. So you stop at the stop sign and then you're inching forward to see around it. But the traffic that's coming to turn, they can't see you either, right? So like now, like you stopped and they're gonna turn, but they don't know you're there and you don't know they're there. So they're like kinda coming around and you're inching up and you're like almost in each other's. So that's, that's the only problem with having them set back that far with the. So that's, that's the only problem with having them set back that far with the obstruction is that people who are turning can't see you and you can't see them and nobody's actually stopping anymore. Now you're trying to go.
Yeah, and, and there's definitely some places, uh, Wallack Ranch is actually a really good example.
Right.
It is difficult because of the, the proximity of the, the property line to the back of the sidewalk. And so we actually look at those areas and there's guidance given on when uh specifically an always stop would occur. And site distance is one of those. So we go out and, and I'd like to actually make sure I understand which intersection it is. We'll look at that. But we go out, we evaluate the intersection based on the stop sign where it is.
Right.
And, and that's when we anticipate or evaluate the distance that you can see and there's minimum distances we have to, to be able to see oncoming vehicles. And if it's below that threshold, uh, it will generate or, or warrant specifically is what that's called, warrant and always stop.
Okay.
And so
I can talk to you after about that particular intersection.
We, we all good.
Right? But um, but yeah, it's just, it's with the way the walls are right by there, it's, it makes it very hard to see.
Yeah, it does. Like I say, the, the big part is though, and I understand your, your concern about wanting to push the stop bars or the stop signs up. If you do that and you have somebody that is not controlled, say, walking, riding a bicycle, they can whiz across that intersection without stopping. They should look both ways. Does that always happen? Unfortunately not. And so if we put the stop zone inside of that pedestrian area, there's a potential that you're gonna have a, an accident vehicle versus pedestrian. Uh, you know, trying to eliminate the site distance issue for the oncoming traffic.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Don't, don't, don't.
You mentioned earlier that you guys work on timing the street signals. Those cabinets are pretty sizable and they're typically in the site triangle as well, aren't they?
Uh, good question. There are some that exist. When we do designs for new intersections, we pull those back out of those. We do upgrades and things. If you notice, we've, some of those, some places, we don't have any right of way to move into. But we've actually relocated power pedestals and signal cabinets to try and move out of those site distance areas.
Hmm, specifically, I'm talking again on Gordon and Stockton Hill and Keno, I believe in Stockton Hill and
Yeah, those, those two projects were done recently. The problem we had there, the, we talk about when businesses encroach close to the right of way, we had nowhere to push those signal cabinets out. So those were just swapped and put back in the same location. Uh, Sycamore and uh the hospital entrance at the old Walmart, the Ross Shopping Center, those two were relocated. We're actually working on another project, which is grant funded to upgrade a signal. Uh, that one's at Bank and Airway. Those will be relocated. When we have, we have right of way in place to go with those, we move those. But specifically Gordon and Keno, both of those, we had between utilities, those are very heavy utility intersections, uh underground utilities, and then the limited right of way and the way the businesses were built. We didn't have anywhere to relocate those.
Okay. And then one more, and I'm not sure whether, who to ask. U-utility companies with the big green boxes that we saw there, they have the technology to build in-ground vaults for those power boxes, because you see them in Scottsdale all over the place. You don't see the big boxes up in the right of ways like that. Is there a reason that Unisource isn't doing that here, or is it cost, or are they just? What, what's going on with those, or do you know?
I would love to answer that question for you, but I don't want to stick my foot in somebody else's mouth.
Okay.
And so it's probably a mic question. Um, I know that we have struggled with the placement of the, the utilities at times. Poles are more difficult because as, as uh Mr. Moquin mentioned, it is difficult for them to, when you have two intersecting overhead lines, they kind of need to be in a specific placement. The above-ground vaults and switch gear and things that you're transformers that you're speaking of, I, I can't answer that question for you at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Do we have any more questions?
One really quick, um, for uh, for staff, planning and zoning staff. Regarding the trees, uh, so, so you can have the trees, but they have to be eight foot. The trunk has to be eight foot bare, basically.
Correct.
So that's gonna preclude like people growing their own trees, you know, which in some cases is pretty economical, rather than buying like a boxed tree and installing it, so it's already high enough to meet that standard, right? Because a small tree is basically a bush. You're not gonna allow that in your
Chair Goss, Commissioner Waters, thank you for your question. Uh, the intention is that it's the, uh, the mature landscaping and those mature trees. Uh, so the trees are permitted when the trunk is visible between the ground and eight feet above the ground. So let's say a young, younger sapling, a, a younger tree, not as filled out, not as uh blocking of your vision. So when you can see that, that trunk and you can look right through, not trying to uh discourage the planting of younger trees. But then as it grows, it, it will need its annual maintenance uh to help push that growth up and then keep those those lower limbs coming up.
Thank you.
And then as it fills out.
Sorry. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next we have HB two four four seven, which is subdivision legislative update. This presentation on HB two four seven seven legislative changes to subdivision processing is information only.
Chair Goss, Commissioners, thank you. So this is just an update regarding Arizona House Bill twenty four forty seven. Just a real brief history back in twenty twenty-three, the Arizona Legislature adopted Senate Bill eleven zero zero three, or eleven and three uh and within the Arizona revised statutes. And at that point in time, this was uh one of the initial compromises to allow for local jurisdictions to maintain rights over its zoning. Uh, back at that point in time, uh, the Building Association, the legislature really was pushing very, very hard for by right zoning for local jurisdictions, stripping away local jurisdiction to govern its zoning. What SB eleven zero zero three did at that time is it gave the cities the option uh to allow for site plans, development plans, preliminary plaits and final plaits to be reviewed administratively instead of going before a public hearing, before the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council. So again, the option, this is, this is what was given to the cities. Uh, there were several cities that did take, uh, take the option and did implement it, and they're doing it successfully today. Uh, it also author, authorized uh personnel to administratively review, design review plans. We currently do that today without a public hearing, as well as adopt self-certification programs and allow for at-risk submittals, which we do as well today uh via policy, and allow for applicants with a history of compliance with building codes to have an expedited permit review. So again, these were all options that were allowed for the cities to, to implement at that time. So on March thirty-first of this year, uh, the governor signed and approved House Bill twenty four forty-seven, which changed that option to shall. So all cities within Arizona are now required to administratively approve site plans, development plans, and in this particular case, preliminary plaits and final plaits. So those are two major changes that will be coming before the end of this year. Uh, local jurisdictions are required to adopt uh the adopting ordinances and have uh processes in place by December thirty-first of this year. Again, it still does allow for the authorization of the personnel to administratively review, uh, review, design review plans. We currently are doing that as the city of Kingman. Uh, again, allows for the at-risk submittal. We are doing that. And again, it will allow for now the expedited permit review. So staff will be preparing uh some changes within its uh processing timelines to allow for expedited permit review. Should the developers be able to meet some, some objective standards uh when it comes to the review itself. The one thing it did allow for the option still, and that was for the self-certification program for registered architects and engineers. And in this particular case, this would allow, if we were to adopt it, it would allow for the architects, engineers to prepare their plans, self-certify them as being uh approved and deemed approved by the city and meeting all city standards, and they can go straightforward into actually building the pla, uh, building their, their project. Staff is not recommending that the city adopt this uh, this particular option. We are looking that we would still want to maintain control over the review of the projects themselves to ensure compliance with our adopted codes. So we did just a little bit of research, uh, just showing what cities were out there that were already utilizing it. Uh, so the city of Goodyear, uh, city of Phoenix and the city of Surprise all had adopted these when it was optional. Uh, they are currently have them in place. They're, they're doing these through the administrative process. And again, is what it does is it takes away the public hearing review process for any type of plat, replat or final plat. So for us to comply, we'll be coming back uh with uh some adopted ordinances uh within our zoning code, as well as our subdivision ordinance. It will set objective defined standards uh for our plaits to be reviewed by. Uh, we'll be looking at also expedite, doing an expedited permit process uh and creating an eligibility criteria. And again, the self-certification program is the one that staff is not recommending that the city proceed with. And this was for a council presentation, so we're giving you guys this presentation this evening. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, I have a question for you, Jason. Um, is this then gonna put a higher workload on staff?
Staff already currently has the same workload as what it does is it actually eliminates bringing it forward to a public hearing process. So from the perspective of a staff aspect of it, it'll actually cut off about forty-five days for the applicant. And it actually allows us to approve the plan administratively and then move it straight into a, a building plan review or building plan check review. Uh, which again, we have some changes coming in regards to that as well.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions?
Um, yeah, I do, Chair. Uh, hey, Jason, uh, it, I'm concerned about visibility with this. Just obviously I've gone on about this a lot, so I'm not gonna waste a lot of your time, but I know our hands are tied because it's just top-down, but is there a way to increase the visibility? Like the decisions that you guys make, maybe in arrears, you could recapitulate, you know, like basically give us a recap or an update of these subdivisions, maybe even some pictures, so we can see what's being produced in this community. Like, I know it's kind of skirting the law, but like just so the public or maybe a newspaper could kind of keep people up to date on what's coming, you know? I mean, I'm in favor of the public having more visibility in these projects and input because you know, properties, one property affects another, one subdivision affects another, you know? And to pretend, I keep hearing council and other people in the city say that, well, this is a, this is a a, a property ownership state or whatever, you know, the property rights or, or Santa's Grant or whatever. I mean, we have planning and zoning because these things affect other people. If you put mixed-use brothel um slash rentals, maybe you'll get it in Tijuana, but yeah. It's an extreme example, but it does have an effect on neighboring values. That's why we have planning and zoning. It's just i- if we could find like a, maybe a clever way to kind of keep people up to date on what's happening in their community, I think that'd be a win. So I don't know if there's any plans that you maybe have in arrears for, for keeping us up to date on that? Have you thought about it? I mean, we've been hearing about this last year, we started hearing about this. As an inevitability, we're gonna basically lose control of our planning and zonings in the state at the APA. Everybody was wor, worried about it. A little cowardly, I thought, in some cases. Some of the planners rolled over and took it, you know? So I'm just curious what the next step is now that we basically lost a pretty, pretty big function of our, our duties here on the commission, you know?
Chair Goss, Commissioner Waters, uh, I'll go back and I'll just reiterate first. This was the compromise to losing our power over zoning. So we still, as a commission and as a city, we have power over our zoning and our general plan. Those are still subject to public hearing processes. Uh, I can tell you, taking some of my experience from Surprise and, and working with the staff here, we're looking to truly develop a storyboard uh which will allow to keep the, the commission apprised, the council apprised, as well as the public, where they will be able to go on our website, ultimately be able to hover over a pin, and it will give them current information for the development projects that are being reviewed or approved uh through the process. And again, that's, that's gonna take some work. Uh, it's gonna be working with our GIS division uh and our new permitting system, so we can, you know, perpetuate that type of data out there. Uh, it was very successful in Surprise in getting that information out there. I, I will tell you, as a planner, I am very much in favor of the public hearing process when it comes to subdivisions. But this was, uh, when you look at the Planning Association, you look at the League of Cities, uh, if this didn't come forward, uh, the likeliness of the cities losing control over zoning was likely the next step.
Thanks, Jason. I know your hands are tied with a lot of this, but so just, just for the record, Chair, we still have rezonings with a public hearing. We have zoning code text amendments, uh, general plan amendments and CUPs and that sort of permitting thing.
That is, that is correct. Those are all applications that would still come before the, the Planning and Zoning Commission. You are a recommending body for each of those applications to the city council.
It's just the design of these things, the cookie cutterness is out of our hands altogether now.
That, yeah, Chair Goss, Commissioner Waters, that, that is correct. And I will tell you, as we are going through it on the backside, we are looking to implement not more stringent, but more development standards for the applicants to adhere to. So that way we do get the design in those subdivisions. We ensure that we have the access that, that meets the minimum requirements for our fire department, as well as just uh general livability and walkability of the community. So those are some of the things that you'll see through some development standards that we look to implement. Uh, we do have a, a workshop that's gonna be planned in July um to, to also preview this to the development community. Uh, so they know that it's forthcoming, but also to start getting their appetite with an understanding that that means there will come uh some subjective development, objective development standards to adhere to.
Okay, if I can leave off, there's a monkey song, you know, rows of houses that are all the same and no one seems to care. We're supposed to care about that, you know? And now we, we can't care about it anymore. So it's trust on you to come up with those standards, objective standards that somehow dictate aesthetics. I don't know how you're gonna do it, especially without the public chiming in, but I wish you good luck. I will actually pray for you, so I hope you can accomplish it.
Commissioner Goss, Chair Waters, let me just correct it real quick. The objective standards aren't with the actual architecture of the homes, um, because that's not part of the subdivision process, but when we're looking at the design of the subdivision, lot areas, varied setbacks, things of that nature, those are the things that we can incorporate into the subdivision ordinance.
And that's what I was talking about, the Feng Shui of the neighborhood, if you will. You know, if you, if you have, there's the, the, the flats in England where they're all the same down the road, you know? It, it's like a tunnel effect. It's, I could see that saving money, ergo, it's good. It's kind of a hyper libertarian environment. It's just, if you could please somehow put some sort of guide rails there, I would appreciate it.
All right, any more questions, comments? All right, thank you, Jason. Okay, next then we have the Development Services Department twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four annual report. Presentation recapping the Development Services Department activities from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, including department overview, planning and zoning commission activity and ongoing development activity. This is also information only.
Chair Goss, thank you. So the annual report is supposed to be an annual report that comes from the Planning and Zoning Commission that demonstrates uh some of the items that have been reviewed by the commission and some of the projects that have been developed in the city in the last year. Uh, upon my arrival here and going back, I noticed that we hadn't really had an annual report for a few years. So this is a comprehensive report that, that brings us up to date through twenty twenty-four. So the information that we shared today, I've expanded it to not just include what we see from a planning and zoning perspective, but development services as a whole. So uh, we are a comprehensive division. We do, we are made up of our planning, uh, planning and zoning division, our building division, as well as neighborhood enforcement. So again, this overview, we will look at development services as an overview for the entire department, planning and zoning commission activity, as well as our ongoing development activity. So just a little bit about development services. Uh, in two, in twenty twenty-four, it really came back to being a standalone department encompassing the building department, planning division and neighborhood services. Neighborhood services transitioned over from the police department. Uh, planning and zoning kind of came out of both economic development and under fire. Um, so we were coming back to being a, a standalone department to, to serve the community at large. Uh, for our mission, our mission as Development Service Department is dedicated to fostering a thriving, well-planned community by giving responsible growth and development, guiding responsible growth and development. Our team provides exert, exert support in planning, zoning, permitting, building permits, inspections, zoning compliance to ensure projects align with the city's vision, economic vitality, sustainability and quality of life. On the right-hand side, you'll just notice that uh it, it lists the, the staff members that make up our department. So you have administration. Uh, we have our building safety uh, uh, members, which are inspectors in the field, planning and zoning, and our neighborhood services. So just uh the table before you just demonstrates a little bit of the activity that took place, that we were able to extrapolate from our permitting system from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four. Uh, this gives the various applications that came before the planning and zoning commission. So in twenty twenty, you had roughly twenty applications, nine of those being zone changes. In twenty twenty-one, you had fourteen, uh, with the highest one being of that at the final plaits. In twenty twenty-two, you had thirteen applications, eight of which were CUPs. And then in 2023, 14 applications, which again, CUPs being of the highest number of applications coming forth commission. And again, 15 in 2024, with again, six of those being CUPs. This is consistent. We see changes zones that take place in 2020. Then it does normally follow with final plaits. And then as you start to build out a community and you start to add services and other types of uses, you start seeing conditional use permits for services that support the growth of the community. So this is very indicative of natural growth within a community. So one of the big milestones that everyone's aware of in 2024, we actually got the general plan, the general plan 2040 adopted and then ratified by the voters on November 5th of 2024. It was a very, very close margin, 51% to 41%, but it did pass. This map just gives the preliminary plaits that were reviewed, kind of gives some of the locations for those preliminary plaits from 2020 to 2024. Total of five plaits totaling 1,551 residential lots. And then 2024, we had 12 final plaits, which platted 630 lots. So these are lots that were actually, by now at this point, majority of those are under construction or have already been constructed. And this just gives again a little graph history just in regards to the plaits with respect to the number of plaits and the lots. 2024, we had two final plaits and 183 lots that we added to our totals. These numbers are also reported to the state on an annual basis. The state looks at not just the number of plaits and the number of units, but they look at our review times. And that's a lot of the reason why we see legislative changes that come forth in which they want us to review projects even at a faster pace. So with respect to just planning and zoning, we implement the general plan and the zoning code, design review. We oversee current and long-range planning efforts, and we review business license applications. The graphs before you just demonstrate the number of both plan reviews and business license reviews that we've done from 2018 or 2019 all the way through 2024. And again, as you see the growth going up, you see the business licenses also going up. And again, when we look at permits issued for residential, commercial, and public permits, so when we go back, we look at 2020, we had just under 800 permits issued. 2021, right around probably 850, 885. 2022, 1,082. 2023, 937, and 885 in 2024. Very indicative of the cycle coming out of from the COVID era. A lot of the developers were processing things, getting them ready. And then of course, with the election coming forward, 2023, 2024, things kind of slowed down. So it's a very typical housing cycle. Overall, this just gives the number of inspections. So up until this last year, we had three or two inspectors. We have three inspectors that are in the field currently. You can just see by the sheer volume, they are busy individuals that are in the field on a daily basis. Brings us to our neighborhood services. Our neighborhood services enforces both our municipal code, our zoning code, as well as building codes. Really, we are a complaint-based division. We do get a lot of complaints. We take those in the order of receiving. We follow up, we do an investigation. That typically leads to notice of violation to the property owner or resident. If they don't clean it up, we typically give a final notice. And if we're still having the concerns that are out there, we're able to move that forward through an abatement process with the city attorney's office. It goes before the courts. Courts would then issue the abatement order, and that allows for staff to come back and actually then hire somebody if we needed to and go out and actually do the abatement on the property if necessary. We lean the properties at that point in time, cover the funds at the time that the properties were ever sold. So just giving you an example, in 2023, we had 542 active cases. In 2024, through this last year, we had 627. We had two officers when we survey a very large area that sprawls. So the fact that they are able to maintain and close those cases and work them on a consistent basis, I'm very proud of my neighborhood services officers. Looking at ongoing development activities, so just looking at growth for the Kingman area. So you can see as it started back in 2020, 30,433. We're creeping up to 34,696. I will tell you in 2024, the U-Haul, incoming U-Haul rental for the city of Kingman was the highest in the nation. So that goes to show you, people were coming here. And kind of leads to the reason why we have so much housing growth stock. These are just some of the pictures of projects that were underway, in the process, permitted, and that are now up and operating in fruition that took place in some of those years. Typically, when you'll see this on an annual basis, you'll see something that's more relevant to just what we've, you know, looked at and reviewed in the last year. And yes, El Pollo Loca was coming, as well as the Tropical Cafe smoothie. Osa Donuts as well. 2024, 2020-24 development activity highlights. This kind of just shows where the growth, for especially commercial purposes, is taking place. So you'll see quite a new structures or new business opportunities along Stockton Hill and Andy Devine. That concludes my 2020 to 2024 report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jason. Do we have questions?
I just one really quick. Jason, there's two officers, compliance officers. Is there, you just restructured the department. Is there any like push to get more people hired on?
I will tell you that this next year, because of the amount of growth that we have, the caseload that my officers have, it is something that I am looking at from a department standpoint. Coming into this department, we certainly saw a need for permitting assistance between our planners, our front tech counters. So that was my first goal. We inherited the two officers that came over to us from the police department. There was two that were doing neighborhood enforcement and two that were doing animal control. So they maintained the two for animal control, and we took over the two for neighborhood services. So I'll be certainly looking at their volume throughout the year, looking at their case closure rates, the amount of time that we spend on them. We're looking at additional opportunities for enforcement, giving us, you know, a larger tool bag to try and gain voluntary compliance, but also to utilize educational opportunities. So although we are complaint-based, we have also launched this year our first proactive zones, which really are focusing on our commercial corridors. And again, the temporary signs and proliferation of those, as well as just the overall property maintenance. So we'll continue to focus on that while we still continue to focus on the cases that do get reported to us. And we will certainly be coming back and evaluating what those needs are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? No? All right, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
All right, next we have announcements by commission members. This is limited to announcements. Board and commission liaison reports, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars. Do we have any?
Just a reminder that I'll be gone next month.
Okay. Also, I know that we are taking like interest levels for people that want to go to the conference. So if you do want to attend the planning conference, just make sure you let Jason know so we can figure out who needs to go. All right. Last, we have requests for future reports and updates. Are there any? Do we have any more reports from staff?
Yes, Chair Goss, Commissioners, thank you. So first and foremost, I wanted to kind of poll the commission. We moved our meetings to 5:30 this last year. It's a desire to move it back to 5 o'clock, providing that worked for the Commissioners. It works for our staff. And so I wanted to put that out there before the commission. We do have a revised resolution coming forward before the council, dealing with another board. And so if that is something that the commission is not opposed to, we would make that recommendation be added to that resolution.
I don't mind 5 o'clock. I don't know.
I requested it be moved back, but originally to 5:15, just because I'm retired now, I'm no longer working. We may be able to fill one of these chairs a little easier if somebody that works a nine-to-five has 15 minutes to get here. That's just my only thought. Because it was tough when I was working in the office and I had to basically run here to get to 5 o'clock.
Is what I can do is to put, since we don't have a consensus, I would have to actually put it on an agenda and bring it back for you guys to actually make a motion for it. So with that being the case, I'll let the other resolution move forward, and then we'll bring it back probably to the August meeting with the commission for an actual action item.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Do we have any?
I have a few more.
Oh, okay.
So before you, this evening, you have the Planning and Zoning Commission Handbook. So when I kind of came before you guys this last year, coming on board, I said I would give you guys opportunities to learn, opportunities to be, you know, the best commissioners that you possibly can and provide educational opportunities throughout. So in my research, we did have a commission handbook. It was antiquated at best. So going out and working with Heather down here, she was able to put this guide together for the commission. We also have one that we're just now circulating through the city attorney's office and the city clerk's office for our Board of Zoning Adjustment, as well as our Board of Appeals. So this is not an all-inclusive guide, but it is certainly there to help guide you. We'll have a little bit better bound copy in the future, but we knew that there was going to be some changes at the end of the year with the subdivisions. So we didn't want to put the expenditure out there knowing that we're going to make some revisions, but we wanted to get it to you as soon as we could. If you have any questions as you read through the materials, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you, Jason. I really appreciate this.
With respect to upcoming meetings and trainings, so we did talk a little bit about the APA Arizona Chapter Annual Conference. So the theme this year is there is no place like home. So you can imagine it's going to be very housing-based, which is just the theme for the legislature in general. APA, of course, supports housing and working with the League of Cities. That is going to be September 3rd through the 5th. I did make the announcement the last time. Our tentative budget has been presented.